The zoning board appeals. Lin's only board appeals. For the date of August 21st, 2018, July 21st. Roll call.
Mr. Wood, absent. Mrs. Curly?
Here.
Mr. Gesono?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mr. Wooten?
Present.
Mr. Figueroa?
Present.
Mr. McQuah?
We have a call. The first case tonight will be 566 Chestnut Street. The humans now are called the. Do you want to read? Do you want to read the?
Sure. 566 Chestnut Street addition to Casey Enterprises by Attorney John Myhle. To the malls and existing single-family structures, construction is placed a six-unit apartment building, each unit having one bedroom upon a parcel located in zoning district I, too.
Okay. Mr. Wood, I have two other calls.
Attorney John Myhle, South Brandon Street, man. We have an existing building in a high school district general residence. In terms of the petition, Mr. Casey, it's not counted as a. You put, uh, build a six-unit apartment building, all single-family residence. Take a look at the property and I submit it on this. I don't see what you have. It shows the largest 30,000 square feet. This 20,000 square feet being a proposition is for a, uh, submit. That this, in addition, ten apartment spaces reflected, uh, was formed in enough space to adopt a different petition. I understand for what Thompson would like to address the, uh, appeals.
Uh, you want the council to adjust?
I could be doing.
But, just counsel, those in the.
I'm ready.
All right. Yeah, do you want to adjust at all?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President, this evening. The developer contacted me and I did speak with the director, Butter, who had a lot of concerns. This property right now has been a problem with the tenants there. They're loud, they're noisy, there's possible drug dealing. It's a real nuisance. And in talking with the owner of the properties, they're taking steps to evict these troublesome residents. And as we all know how difficult it is to do that. This proposal is being proposed in the hopes that this will eliminate that issue. And, uh, and based on the conversations I've had, I don't have a problem with it. As long as the neighbors are in favor of it and, uh, I think it would be an improvement.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's, uh, Dr. Moore, show you the construction building.
Mr. Chairman, just, uh.
Anyone in favor of this petition? Please state your name and address.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Chris Casey, uh, the current tenants in there, we have a judgment for possession that's been stayed until the end of this month.
If anyone has a need to have a long hallway, please give them that. Don't ask me before.
I just wanted to say, you know, we have taken action against these tenants. Uh, we have a judgment for possession of the Northeast Housing Board with an execution of the 30th of this month.
That's in the adjacent homes.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor of this petition? Anyone else saying questions or?
Yeah, I have a question about the architect. Casey, split the side units.
Each unit?
Split what is in the unit?
About 560, 575 area. 612, I'm sorry, it's right there, it's written, 612. 1A2.
Yeah, no, they put, they put side units, that's why they want it. Yeah, 612, that's good.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. So there's a problem in your existing building. This is a large building, it's got six units. You gonna have management? You got a management company or who's gonna take care of it?
I, uh, but I will say this, I have eight units, uh, right on Maple Street, adjacent to this. We've had no problems, you know, I've had properties for 20 years now, but I've had no problems, no problems with the city. This is a little out of control and that's why we went forward and evicted them. But right, right next to this property, uh, 269 Maple Street, that the butts it went back. You know, we've had four units there since 1995 and I've had no problems with any of the neighbors. It's this, the original tenant died like two years ago and then a bunch of, you know, things got out of control there. But I did take action about it. It just, it takes a long time and they were tenants there, you know, since 19, I mean, since 2008. The past two years, it's been.
Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else in favor of this petition? Close the hand, close the hand, close the close. Anyone here a close to this petition? Anyone here a close to this petition? Anyone here a close, a hand, close, close, Williams, the wish you would vote?
I'll make a motion, you grant.
What question? I'm Mr. Cole, second by Mr. Seer. Please call the board.
Mr. Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Figueroa?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the petition has been granted.
Okay, thank you.
Petition has been granted by Ms. Disor.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
All right, the next case is ZBA 9837. Where is that? All right, please come over.
All right, the locus is 23 Greystone Park, addition of Katie Van New. To allow your militia of existing structure and construction of a two-story attached garage with storage space above, upon an undersized lot.
Okay, I understand.
4,500 square feet in zoning district power on increasing lot size from 33.3 to 45.7.
Right. Right, so here it is. Now, both of those are favor. Counsel, Mr. Seer, would you like to speak?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I became aware of this property about two weeks ago and I went over, I met the family. They showed me what they wanted to do. Um, and it. It does look like they're trying to take advantage of the amount of property that's there. I don't know the percentage, but then after talking with the woman and meeting her family, I found out that, uh, her husband is an ex-Queen Beret who died serving our country a year ago. And what she's trying to do is make a better life for us, for our kids. And this will help them by creating a space where she can bring her washer or dryer. We should be able to have a playroom for our kids, be able to park our cow. And her son is trying to follow in her dad's, in his dad's footsteps with the outdoor sports, hunting, camping, things like that. So they need a storage area as well. From after speaking with her and telling her that the concerns may be that this space could be used for rental property, she assured me that that's not what she was planning on doing. She assured me that what she's trying to do is build a new life for our family. They moved here from Washington originally, they're from the area, they grew up here. I do feel as though that we should help them out and try to, um, approve this. I know some neighbors may have a concern, but the ones that I talked to in the neighborhood that I contacted, they contacted me, said they didn't have any, uh, issues.
Yeah.
So.
So you say she is a gold star wife?
Gold star wife, family, correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Anyone have any questions?
Architect here?
I do, he is.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Also, Mike Sweeney said, from the veterans.
Right.
I, uh, I know my full address, so I just, I'd like to say, Mr. President.
You want to speak?
Please, uh, my name is Mike Sweeney, I'm the director of veteran services for the city of Lynn. And as Counsel Seer so eloquently put, Katie, she's a gold star wife. And I think the intention with Counsel was talking about is just what it is. I think what she's trying to do is just build a life here for her family. I think as an Afghanistan veteran myself, I know the struggles that my family, including so many of our veterans have gone through, and I think that this is a way, well, I know there's always, uh, if, there's a way that the zoning board could come to a way to help this family come home, because I think that, what I get out of talking to her about what she's trying to build for her and her family, is just a way to start the healing process and move on and build a life. And I think it's, um, Lynn's always been a very welcoming community to veterans and gold star families. And I, with respect, would ask for favorable consideration of her request.
Thank you. Mr. Jacob, you want to make your presentation?
Sure, is this a good place to present, Frank?
Yeah, that's right.
So I'm Walter Jacob, the architect, this is Katie Van New, my client. Property is at 23 Greystone. I think some of you have been to the property, but these are some photographs if you need. There are also photographs in your package. You'll see a very nice home. You'll see also the remnants of what used to be a garage. The roof is gone and two of the walls are gone. Proposing to put the new garage in the place where the previous garage was. I have a lot of boards, but I don't need to show them all unless people have questions. I'll show a couple more and point out some key factors. So this board shows Greystone, shows the existing house, and then it shows the area where the proposed garage is, which is right here. Just for reference, the previous garage, where there's still a foundation and some walls, is here. So the, we're expanding the garage a little bit because cars got bigger, so there's about two feet in the front that we're moving forward. And then there's an existing stair to help get into the side of the house. And that's where we're making the connection to the house. So that'll serve as a mudroom. The first floor will serve as a one-car garage with a little extra storage space off to the side. And as Mr. Seer said, Katie's son is a fisherman and a hunter. And so part of the reason for the upper level is for him to have a workshop and a spot to basically do his hobbies. You'll see what I marked, I don't know if you saw, when I recently marked the proposed addition. So the first time I did it with spray paint on the ground, the second time with tape, but he's got a bunch of lobster traps. So I think the idea of the second level is for him to kind of work on this type of thing and be attached to the house. And we've designed it in a way to reflect mostly what garages or carriage houses were like. So the existing house has a lot of stone work and slate. You'll see the pattern of the proposed garage. Is more carriage house style. So again, it's set back and made with wood, has sliding garage door. And I think that's the way that a lot of carriage houses are made. The main house had a lot of the detail. A carriage house often was secondary to that, so we tried to work with that type of architecture. The reason we cited the garage where it is, right in the back corner, was because that makes sense because you can have driveway in front of it, it was where the previous garage was. And we feel that's the most appropriate location on the site, even though it does approach on side yard. Set backs, it was pressing because there was a garage there.
I don't have any questions with the James.
So how many cars can get in the driveway, not in the garage? How many cars can get in the driveway?
If you don't park where the garage is, once you experience with how many cars. I think it's tandem, but if you really squeezed in, you probably could get two side by side.
I know it's tandem, side by side tandem.
Yeah, it's uncomfortable to do it side by side because it's rather tight, so I think the way.
You can't open the doors, but you can.
Yeah, you might park and climb out the window, but I think boards used as a, in tandem. I think Katie parks in the front sometimes, but the preference would be to have a space for her to pull in in the obvious snow in the winter.
But there is always speed pack, too, right?
Yes.
What are the means, it was a little difficult to, for me to quite understand, how you get, how you access it? Can you access this carriage house? It looked to me like it went into a mudroom, which was still outside the main house. And you can go in there, but you just access it straight from, from inside your, your current house?
Well, so the reason we attached it, so one of our considerations is to do a detached garage. We wanted to attach it to the main house, so that mudroom essentially becomes, you have the front door and then the space that we use to attach it would become the formal mudroom. So a lot of times your guests come to the front door, but now kids coming home, throwing off food, she could use the mudroom, go into the house. We like it attached because it is primarily Katie's son, I guess your daughter too, but mostly her son. We didn't want him going outside to, um, go to the space.
So is it only one means of entrance in this, so the original house?
One means of entrance to the garage?
Yeah, to the, to the upstairs.
Yes.
It's still the house?
It's still the house, yep.
Was a connection. I think there's one door that connects both the mudroom and garage.
Yeah, so this plan could help better, right? So the main house is here, this is where the garage is, and then there's a second level. So this is Katie's kitchen. And so you would go from the kitchen into the mudroom and then upstairs.
Correct. But from the outside, you'd be able to, that new, uh, new side entrance.
Right, so.
Oh, this one, yeah.
Yeah, right there. Here, yeah. So if you were to park in the driveway, say Katie was there, and maybe when the son's older, he has a car, he might park here and come in here. So, you know, really, this is the front door and back door. And then we have some doors here out of the garage, just because there is a backyard here for things like that. But that's really only from the garage.
So you can get upstairs from the garage?
If you come out of the garage and then go into the mudroom and then go upstairs. But you can't, you know, in the garage, you can't go up from the garage, you'd have to go into the mudroom.
Is that the furnace in that garage?
No.
How are you gonna keep it warm?
We will probably put a, um, there are these split systems that add a little heat to the space to keep the upper level warm for the sun. The garage, we haven't really thought, we didn't want to condition the garage, we heard only conditioning the second level.
So you propose some sewer and water, so like?
Um, yeah, we do have water, we have a sink and a toilet, no shower facility. Really, there's a utility sink on the lower level because, so I would call it a playroom, except his play is a little messier. So there's this utility sink on the lower level, we have one on the upper level.
Why do you have to have that? Sounds like living quarters already to me.
Um, it's convenient for them, it's really, if you look at the garage, it's a garage, but the second level is really an expansion of the house. It's almost as if we were to add to this part of the house and we wanted, you know, an extra bathroom or something like that. So this, we did purposely leave out a bathing facility because we were trying not to make this a second bedroom. It's more of a playroom, but we thought, you know, if he's messy, we don't want him coming back to the other part of the house and then running back and he has his shirt over it. And that's really what we wanted.
What you want to use it for now, what I'm concerned with down the road, anybody can just buy that house and make living quarters out of that, not even coming to any board.
They could, they would have to probably add a kitchen. I think if one, it's illegal to do that without a permit, but they would have to add a kitchen.
So many of the Udomantum and District of Leeny, I would do. I know, exactly, you know.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
You can't control.
One of the reasons why, you know, we didn't put a bathing facility, because we know that that's typically something that allows it to easily become a living facility. You would have to add a kitchen, you would have to add a shower, a bath.
It's not a big deal, but I'll be adding. I'm gonna say.
Yeah, I, I agree. I also think you have to, I think, first trust people, even though maybe there are examples where people haven't been honest, I think in this particular case, that's what we're presenting. If, you know, Katie's plans and her representation, representation to me, she's making this her home. That's what I have to believe, and I do believe her. I, you know, I understand what you're concerned.
I'm not just believing, I'm considering down the road with the, there's always a bar. This is, it's working and it's getting worse. And I just don't understand why it has to be attached. That's my, attached and water just turns me off.
See, the attached part is, is really important to us because I, I think it is essentially a playroom and we don't want to send the kids outside of the house to play above the garage. One of the things about this house too, um, part of that space will probably be stored. And if you saw the basement of the house, it's, it's a mud hole. So they don't really have what a typical house would have for a basement. I think Katie at some point will repair that, but for the time being, there's a lot of storage to need. There's, you know, need, you know, certainly for this playroom or recreation room. And we think it's safe and better for the family that it is attached. We think that it's part of the house, not going outside of the house. I do hear your concern about the water, our representation is that's.
So there is only one entrance in and it's out of the mudroom. It's all out of the main, the main house. I mean, so I think from, from my standpoint, that's probably more in keeping it with, it will only be used with the, the main resident of the house because there is no separate exit. There is no setup for a separate exit which could be conducive within the, you know, the bottom if you're out of, turning to a bottom without having a separate exit from the outside. So, you know, from my standpoint, I think it looks like it would only be used as, you know, the primary residence.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I just, just explain the, uh, the, the windows above the, the garage entrance and you go in a hoist. Explain to me what, what the purpose of the hoist is.
Yes, we were, so what we were trying to do with this garage is, is again, make it a recreation area for the son. And we thought it would be fun for him to take his lobster traps up there and work on them. We wanted to make it a little bit more utilitarian in that respect, so I was kind of drawing from a typical lobster shanty. It was a little bit more just an architectural feature, but.
And homes like that, that, how would we, to have, actually, hey, you know? So let's keep them at the end.
That, that's a little what I was going for with, with that. It might, you know, I really think if I had a lobster trap, I probably wouldn't put it on a hoist, I'd probably take it up the stairs. But it was part of the, the language that we were going for, the.
Yeah, so our son, the thing that's, they have lobster traps online.
He's, I think, he's been spending a lot of time at the Swampscout Yacht Club, is it, with the fishermen? So they've been getting him into, you know, fixing the traps, fishing a little bit, and that's kind of what we're doing for him here. And that's architecturally why we have that.
Now, now, let me ask you this, Mr. Jacob. If this pass wants to hope it is, I'm in favor of that. And I know that you, I work on jobs that you are the architect, and I can attest that you're one of the best I've ever seen.
Well, thank you.
And especially in this type of a design. And would, would the owner have you, was, on a scale that you could go there and make periodic inspections and see that most of the things are being carried out right? Do you have that in your agreement or, or what do you have?
Yeah, we, we have that in our agreement and we do a solid set of construction drawings, which you receive and make sure that what we permit is what gets built and we tend to be.
That's what I'm saying. It is, I'm not just gonna handle the.
That's correct, yeah.
Because that's the way you usually do some checking.
Yeah, no, we observe during, we have a little construction order.
Anyone else have any questions? Anyone else in favor of this petition? Do you, do you, please petition?
Yes, if there's no question. I have a question, if I may.
Are you in favor?
No.
All right, but your time will count.
All right, but it involves the notice to the.
No, your time will count.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else in favor of this petition here, right? Close the hand, close the hand, close the close, close the close. Anyone here close this petition? So one on hold.
I, the question that I have.
Give me a name of the judge.
Yes, my name is Donovan Mayland, I live at 41 Lynchure Drive. I can see their property. That house at one time belonged to Mayor Phillips.
All right, wait, wait, hold it, hold it. We have a lot of cases here.
All right, no problem.
Let's pick the petition.
There was, the second notice that was sent to the others explained everything that had happened at the first meeting. It said that some had been continued, but it did not give a date as far as the next meeting, which was this month, the same month as the prior meeting was held. So we had no way of knowing until we went down to City Hall and to the City Clerk's office and asked when the next meeting was to be held, because the notice did not tell us. It came in the mail. And I spoke to Mary and she pulled it up on her computer and she was surprised, but she did confirm that there was no date as far as the next meeting.
But let's get to the basics.
So my question is.
About, because I understand that you've been going down there being a pest to her. And that is right. And I'm gonna tell you right now, you have no right to tell her how to handle the job. Do you understand? Now, if you have a complaint and you want, you can register right here with me, not her.
All right.
Understand, okay, proceed. I just want to let you know.
Sure.
Proceed with you. You want to say anything more, honey? On the petition, this petition.
No, I don't want to say. I'm looking for an answer to the question as far as should that notice have given a date? That's my question.
Well, we'll take that under consideration. How about your brother, you want?
Yes, my name is Douglas Mayland. I live at 41 Lynchure Drive. A structure three stories tall replacing a garage is too tall for that neighborhood. I walked five blocks to Swampscout and five blocks to Nahand. And we got to, from Ocean Street down to Lynchure Drive. There is not one three-story garage in those blocks. It's not contingent, uh, consistent with, with the neighborhood. The second question I have is with a legal notice for this construction. It said nothing about this garage being hitched to the house. It said nothing about increasing the size.
You don't have to raise your voice, you keep the voice down.
Of increasing the size of the garage in the front. It said nothing specifically that it was a three-story addition that's ditched right there in that garage. It said storage space above the second floor, which to me meant an attic. I would have no problems with the garage being replaced. I would have no problems with the garage being replaced that was there. I do have a problem with a three-story garage replacing a single-story garage. And the, the last point I want to make, does she have to show a financial hardship to have this approved?
Anyone else here opposed to this petition? Anyone else here opposed to the petition? Uh, close, here, close the quote. Just one question. Mr. Jacobs, how high is it?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven feet. I wouldn't call it a three-story. It's a one, two.
It's two and a half. Yeah, it is a two and a half. Alright, thank you. Just want that for the record.
Sure.
I have a question with, uh, just from Mary. So the notice is, it said that Casey's continued, it didn't give a date? It did not give a date? No, it said, continue. Yeah, that's a pretty severe mistake.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else opposed to this petition here? Uh, close, here, close the quote. What is the issue with it?
Well, personally, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it. I had, I would like to see it re-advertized or let us send out, explaining that it's gonna be continued until September meeting. I think that's, that's a major issue with people aren't, aren't properly informed about a hearing like this.
Do, do you have a, a two or three?
Sure. The, and Darren C F sent a letter and I can read it. It's pretty much everything that he said. Um, this is the fourth part. Um, he understands it's an attached garage, storage space. Spoken with the petitioner, who tends to use the floor as a play area for children and laundry. And he strongly supports the petition. It pretty much says exactly what, what he says.
I ask, uh, what is the issue with it?
Motion to approve.
Motion, uh, Mr. Gisome, grant the, the, have a second there. Would you have a second motion? Please go.
Mr. Figueroa?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Gisome?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
No.
Mrs. Curly?
No.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, great. Petition has been denied.
I'd be glad to follow the motion or reconsideration if it's put on for the September meeting and properly advertised. But I think we gotta be, we, I think we gotta be honest with the neighbors.
Alright, I see. You say it's probably bad if you, uh.
I second that motion.
For reconsidering, yeah, at the next meeting.
We can reconsider right now and then, and then it can be posted that where it will be on the September meeting.
Yeah.
So you have a motion and a second to, on, on reconsideration. She can come, take the vote right now.
Mr. Figueroa?
Yes, to reconsider.
What are you looking for now? Just to reconsider, maybe?
Yes.
Just maybe two.
Yes, to reconsider.
Mr. Gisome?
Yes, to reconsider.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, reconsider. We reconsidered at the, at the meeting.
September eighteenth.
September eighteenth.
Petitioner Min Heng Bo, my attorney, seemingly by Cal, this is Western Avenue, right? To allow conversion of an existing non-conforming structure that impulses within dimensional setbacks and zoning district business to mixed use. First, uh, storage commercial, residential use above street level, with less than minimally required parking spaces for proposed units.
My attorney, that's how, uh, here on behalf of the petition, we originally filed for the, July second of the July seventeenth meeting. There are no new cases heard on July seventeen, just an advertising, probably, uh, carnival. Um, about gang, that's why we're here today, tonight, for Min's on vacation, but still, Chris, this is the architect, but I've got his builder. And, uh, we're here essentially, uh, following up on, uh, the approval we got at the city council, which was, uh, required for us to go and get approval for a residential use in a business district. If you're familiar with this, this is the old Selly's Club. It's a bar, uh, on Western Avenue. And since nineteen twenty-six, it's been in the business district, given padding, commercial use. Uh, Mr. Bo proposes to, uh, eliminate the bar and to, uh, use the area of the first floor for, uh, uh, commercial purposes and to construct a building and do in addition, uh, eight, a park. Uh, before we went to the city council, we all met with, uh, Councilor Capano and went over. We all went over what, uh, proposal was, because we understood and he made certain that we did, that, uh, his only concern was a pocket, because the city council approved it as a use for the, for the male and the women, but what used to be a pocket glass is no longer being a pocket glass. And that's in the front of the, right?
So where is the, I didn't mean to interrupt you. You know which side I was down there? I could see the seven, uh, the seven forty-two or twenty-fourty-two on a building that stood a wall. Then I said, well, which way am I gonna go? So with seven forty-four, so this is a piece of the white wood land, or maybe that goes with this, and the coffee glass is nothing there.
The coffee glass has two lots. One is like three thousand and one is six hundred. But, but, uh, I think on the death of John McCaughan, the coffee glass no longer existed. And then, uh, as I understand it, with Councilor Capano, the city council had given approval for, I think, an automobile park, uh, park store. But it hasn't come to fruition. And that was part of the mix, because he was concerned that they had previously approved the sub-uses. And so his largest concern was, even though there's long street, a park, uh, park. So we met with him, uh, we presented a plan and the city council approved it. The city council approval said that we needed to do two things. We had to get site plan approval and we had to come to the Board of Appeals relative to the park. And I was familiar with the coffee glasses. We made, uh, approaches to those folks about what they were going to do, use or not use. We really haven't had a response. So we went through several revisions of the plan until we arrived at what we think satisfies, uh, the first concern, uh, and the chief and primary concern, which was park. What's proposed are eight units and the eight units require twelve spaces. So we have twelve spaces clearly for that. Then the question is, how many spaces are required for the commercial use? And then with respect to that, um, we reduced the size of the building so that we could free up more space for park at onsite. So we wound up with what we think is sufficient, is nineteen spaces. And then, uh, I had discussions with, uh, Commissioner Dunham and, uh, he said he would consider, uh, because there's some areas that are common, stairwell, walkways to go to the, uh, residential units, there's some areas to be used for storage. So, when I filed in July thirty-one, I asked Mr. Reed to do two things, because we had gone through three or four.
Revisions, right?
So what we did is we asked him to show, uh, what the existing building was, to show what the proposed building was.
They have to give their name and address.
Robin A. Garrett. And one, yeah, G U T K. Everett Bass. Well, Streetville, Russell.
Yes, please.
One seventy-four Jefferson.
Yeah, and where is your occupancy?
I'm a general contractor. General contractor?
Oh, general contractor, alright. And now, sir.
I'm Philip Criticos, K R I, T I K O S, fourteen also known to everybody, um, the architect.
Okay, so what we finally did is, uh, Mr. Reed prepared the first one and chose, um, the dimensional issues and chose the current building and chose the proposed building. And then he did an analysis on the, uh, second page of, uh, how the space is being used. And I think the architect has also done, uh, a, uh, a calculation. And the space on those calculations, that they believe that, um, nineteen spaces is sufficient. Twelve for the residential, one point five for dwelling unit and seven, uh, for the commercial use. But the relief that we asked for was for less than the required parking, because it was like a moving target as it tried to calculate. As you know, uh, the, uh, the residential people are in twenty-four seven presumably. So we passed the twelve spaces. Commercial has, is gonna be a personal services, as I understand it, from Mr. Cole, a nail or hair salon.
To me, just the nail salon.
Yeah. And so people come either by appointment, but they don't, they're not here seven days a week. There's on-street parking. But we believe we satisfy the commercial, uh, parking, uh, requirement. Uh, and, uh, we arrived with that through what the architect described, what Mr. Reed described and from our conversations with, um, the building commissioner as to, uh, the willingness to consider, um, spaces not being used for retail sales or personal service. So that was the large reason that, uh, we were coming before you. Also because, as I indicated, when the special permit was approved by the city council, uh, one of the items that they required was, uh, with stipulations. And I, I filed, I think, copies of the actual special permit decision, but this is, as you can see, it says granted with stipulations and it says with CBA inside plan approval, signed by Mr. Dunham. So, that was in, uh, conformance with the request of the city council when they granted approval. But there's a second reason we're here with respect to, um, the board's authority. And that is that this building was built in nineteen twenty-six. Zoning came under the city plan in nineteen twenty-six. There were no real dimensional regulations in nineteen twenty-six. The building hasn't really changed its location, um, and the lot hasn't changed, uh, its configuration. What's changed are the requirements and the so-called dimensional requirements. And part of this comes down to footnotes in the zoning ordinance. Uh, one of the footnotes, footnote ten, says that if you have a building on a business lot which adjoins a, uh, a building that is either, uh, zoned for a single-family, a two-family, or a common house use, or is used for any of those uses, that you're required to have, uh, a sideline of seven and a half feet. This building's never had a sideline of seven and a half feet. Uh, but the building to the right, uh, the left, if you're looking from the direct rate, so it's, uh, is a three-family building, is a residential use. So I went through two or three things with, uh, Mr. Mutti about whether we did or we didn't need a sideline. The second is obviously the building doesn't have, uh, the front end, but that hasn't changed. In the business district, there are no dimensional regulations. You can build with a property line, but, so Mr. Dunham actually helped us in this, because he said, we don't have a business use, we don't have no parking use. We have a mixed use. And in the central business district, for example, if you have a business use on the first floor, as this building does, and residential use is on the second floor, the zoning ordinance has a definition that says that's a mixed use. That a mixed use has on-street level, commercial, and on the upper floors as residential. So the question is what dimensional regulations, if any, apply? And so to, uh, for, uh, for this caution, we came in and I originally asked for less than the required right side. There's another section in the foot, in the footnote of the, I think it's nine, to the table of dimensional regulations. And it says that any building that's used for, uh, residential, uh, purposes must have a gridiron of clear space of fifteen feet. So if you look at the drawing, you will see that the existing building and the proposed building in this corner don't have fifteen feet. They have fifteen feet all through here, but in that one corner, that corner's not changing. That corner of the building is staying. So it's this side of the, of the building and this side of the building that, uh, have the sideline problem. And it's this side of the building that doesn't satisfy the current requirement for a fifteen-foot gridiron. So, uh, those are the reasons that we're here in terms of seeking relief. And as I said, the paramount reason is that when the city council approved it, they did it with the understanding that we would do two things subsequent. One is come to the Board of Appeals. And the second is, uh, go through site plan review. And we go through site plan review, because if you add more than ten spaces, if you have a building more than five thousand square feet, you have any one of those, then you're required to go through site plan review. So we, if the board throughs this, we still have to go to site plan review.
We're in the process of preparing that, I know.
Yeah, that, that has a different requirement in terms of the drawings you got to slide with the, uh, site plan review.
So how many square feet on the first floor of the building? Cause I mean, I, I, even at forty-five years old, I can't read with a drawing.
I thought that Mr. Reed's plan, no, 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 that's why Adam Ralph, you put the Ralph's plan. I think he's got, um, and that's, I know the crosshatching and the other hatching.
I think you're full set.
Yeah.
We go, that's a, um.
Basically, yeah. That's gonna be the fourth retail. This is the entrance to the upstairs of yours. This is a laundry room that's gonna be serviced for the apartments upstairs. And this is basically the retail space. This is the, and also answers for the.
You have seventeen hundred square feet that's gonna be an nail salon?
Yes. Actually, just a little more, I know it's, it's also square feet.
And how many parking spaces for the nail salon?
Um, seven. Seven. So basically, basically what it is, is this is gonna be entranceway for the apartments above. Alright, a laundry room serviced in the apartments above. This is the actual retail space with two bathrooms and a rear exit.
Did you wanna ask a question?
So is the nail salon going to space A or B?
At the, we originally were gonna do two spaces for hair salon and nail salon. Right now, I think we're gonna combine it and just make it one space. It's gonna be one space, one store.
I can think of four nail salons in the same area.
I take control of what people want, but I mean, that's, I can have to come up and talk.
Why two-bedroom apartments? Why not one-bedrooms?
There would be huge one-bedroom apartments with this amount of space that we have.
It's a very dense area to add, potentially thirty-two people. An additional thirty-two people and additional nineteen cars to that Market Basket Rotary, Market, Market Square Plaza. This is a big development.
Not even that, but the nail salon alone, I mean, it's gonna have more than seven people working there.
Yeah.
I mean, that area is, is a joke for people as it is now.
And then, is it gonna encroach on the community path the city's trying to do? How is that gonna go adhere to the community path that's right along the train tracks?
I, you know, right now, as far as, as far as those two spaces are concerned, right now, they have a potential with nail salon. There's, there's nothing, right now, they're looking to combine any in one space. They're talking to that person, okay? There's, nobody's got a lease, nobody's got anything signed. I mean, that's something as far as the retail space, we, we want to come back and, and do approval.
And I can see people parking in the community path now, potentially blocking the space for a lot of pedestrians and bikers and, I mean.
I mean, for, for the footage that we have in the building, it really requires eighteen spaces. We have nineteen. It's, if you take the square footage, break it down for basically one car for three hundred, of less than eighteen hundred square feet on retail space. Alright, so I'm only needing eight spaces for that. So we have an extra space to be demoing that doesn't, we have nice here.
Our goal was to satisfy what the zoning ordinance requires on some parking. There's no question that there's a lot of uses here. And then there, and as I said, we started out, that was what Councilor Capano started. But, you know, we're standing at, the city council did approve it. Um, they did see the parking plans. Uh, we, we've tried to make, as I say, some approach to that, because there's a large piece of land next door. We actually did plans, tried to utilize that, but we couldn't have it make contact. And Councilor Capano tried to help us, reach the people who had gotten approval to put the auto pass. It's not, it's not a retail store, as I understand it.
No.
It's gonna be a wholesale store. So, so they have a total of like nineteen thousand square feet. The ones are three thousand square foot, one, I think the other's like fifteen or sixty. But they haven't done anything with respect to the lot, but we certainly looked at, uh, because you can, uh, for a apartment house use, park within two hundred feet and they were the most readily available. So when that occurred, we actually shrunk. That's how we started to take the building and reduce it, because we decided, we, we wanted to then find these spaces onsite. And that's why the concept was to put some underneath.
So was the, as you, you said to me twice that you fulfill the parking requirements, I mean, you're, you're standing in front of us, because you're not meeting the parking requirements, right?
We did, there was revisions to the place.
I know, I know. Yes, you know, watch out.
I, I.
I'm asking you. I know, I'm asking you, so was the adding correct?
I can't say that it's incorrect. I said it again, right? I can read you what I wrote.
Why are you seeking a variance?
For two reasons.
What other?
The right sideline and the gridiron.
Not parking at all?
Well, to begin, if I was going to come here and seek one thing, I'd figure out as much relief as I could, so I'd have like one stop shop. But I, because there's a question on the park. But I'm satisfied, well, Reed is satisfied, the architect is satisfied, and I think based on my conversation to Mr. Donovan, he's satisfied that we fulfilled what he said we could do, which was, this is the second time of Reed's plan, show how the first floor retail was being used. So that's how we came up with 19 spaces. We never varied having 1.5 for dwelling unit. That's the zone requirement for parking. That's not a problem. The question is, what's the 1 for 300 gross square feet on retail? So that's the other reason.
So you're telling me, and unfortunately, you don't sit on the side of the table, I do, and I'm asking you, you don't think 1,700 square feet of commercial space, they're not going to jump in for those other 15 parking spaces you've got for the people that live there?
Well, but I also know reality. People go to work.
Right.
And I also know something else. Okay? When people go get their haircut, they don't park at the back of the building. When they go to a convenience store, they don't park at the back. They're getting parking at the back of the building, and that can count to satisfy the zoning ordinance. I drive home every night, guess the little store that I challenge that says parking at the ridge. I've never seen a single person park at the ridge. They park on a state highway and go in and get lottery tickets. Okay? So people come and go, there's no prohibition for onsite parking. But I would like to read, because I go through this all the time, because I think I know a little bit about it. And I'll tell you what I wrote. I wrote exactly 19 spaces. So let me read it to you. If people choose to disregard it, I don't say they're incorrect, but I'm just telling you, it's not what I wrote. I add, this is my, this is what I filed. Permit the alteration of a building in the business district to mixed use. Street level, two retail stores, because that's what we considered. Two floors above, residential, eight apartments, with 19 onsite parking spaces and less than the required sidelines and gridiron and parking. And that's what I just explained to you is why we're here. And I read that, so we need to see. But I didn't say we need to park. I said we have 19 spaces. We have 19 spaces. And the architect and the surveyor say that that's a required number.
You have something?
But it's, you know, the freedom of the building department, unless it's known what's going in there, they can't make a determination how much parking is needed.
We spoke to about the nail salon, we spoke to about possibly a hair salon, something like a hair salon. I recall, we don't, we don't, until we build a building and we actually lease it up, we don't know what's going in. We know what's in there now, it's a lot, and we're getting rid of the lot. We're getting rid of the lot license, we're not trying to carry that over. All right, so I mean, until we actually build a space and advertise a space, I may focus on this as for residential. Okay? The downstairs commercial space, we want to keep it, we want to use it. But I mean, if we go by zoning, zoning says 1 for 300. All right? I mean, by standard, do they have employees? Yeah, some people ever go in, they're going to have employees, but also a lot of these people are going to go to work. All right? Some of these people may not have more cars. There's going to be ample parking during the day. Whatever business is in there is going to close down between 8:00 and 9:00.
Yeah, you know what this is? This is almost like the, no, the one before about, you know, 10 years from now, the garage is going to be turned into a apartment. I mean, I think what the building department did, and what we've seen, what's both talked about is, if you really need a variance and all, because right now, if it is a nail salon, I agree, you don't need a variance. But if you put another use in there, like a sales, then it jumps for you. Then you made me shy.
He's not going to do no stuff.
Please, please, don't tell me what he's going to do or what he's not going to do.
Well, I'm building something for him right now, and I know what his goal is. His goal is a nail salon. But he's sitting there, you know, I don't know what's in the neighborhood. He's telling me there's four nail salons in the day. Right now, I'm building him a nail salon over there. It's actually a very nice nail salon, you know, and it's looking at, he's got about 18 customers. He can deal with that at times, but he's got a bigger parking lot over there. It's a bigger store, it's 2,400 square feet. This is a lot small when you sit down and figure it out. I mean, he's looking to do a nail salon right now. His family owns nail salons, they own convenience stores. He's not looking to do a convenience store over there. I also figure, I mean, I'd like for this to become, I don't like the economy markets well right on West of that, you know? And that was another dilatated site that's, you know...
I think that the buyer's going, the license is getting turned in, and the character of that building is going to be predominantly residential. And that's why we never varied from asking to make it certain it's satisfied 1.5 for the eight houses. That we do. So the real question is, what's the requirement? And we went through many.
Originally, there was three stores.
How many residential units are in that building right now?
In that building right now? Not yet.
Exactly. So let's step away from the commercial use for a second and move on to the minimum 16 bedrooms you're adding into the building as well. The retail isn't what bothers me. It's the 16, it's people that are going to move in there and the building.
The problem that you had.
And I finish, and then you can talk again. And the commercial use downstairs with the 16 bedrooms upstairs is overwhelming the site. And that's the point I'm trying to get across, that you're focusing on one portion of this, not the whole thing.
We're focusing on what the city of Lynn fathers adopted as the zoning ordinance. I didn't adopt it, they did. They're the ones who said 1.5 for dwelling unit. Would it be a better formula if they did buy bedrooms? Perhaps. They didn't. So those are the rules they made. And that rule says, if you had 1.5 for dwelling unit, you satisfied the residential requirement. It says nothing about bedrooms. It says 1.5 for dwelling unit. So you've got a dwelling unit, five bedrooms. You need 1.5 spaces for dwelling. That's not something we did. That's something that are the rules that the city of Lynn adopted. And so we provided, and I think you're losing sight, we said we never varied from having 1.5 for dwelling unit. You don't like that formula, but we're planning by the rules they made. And that's the rule, it's 1.5 for dwelling unit. And we satisfied that. We satisfied that, and additionally, the commercial use and another space as well. And the reality is, not everyone shows up at the same time at that site. And I'm a disbeliever, to tell you the truth, that people are going to pull up in front of a business use on Western Avenue and go around and park at the ridge. I don't believe it, based on my knowledge and my experience of human nature and what I've seen. But that's why it was important to look at and see, was there any prohibition? Was there a bus stop? There were none of those. If you drive by the front of that site, there was a bar, and understand that the bar was open till 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, was open at 8:00 a.m., was seven days a week, and that's the use that's there. And I, so it's a question of, what is the benefit for the city? I think there's a greater benefit and a greater need for the citizens of Lynn who are looking for housing and apartments, to have the ability to find something that they can afford and stay in the city of Lynn. And I think there's a decline, and I represent many buyers and restaurants of the city of Lynn. There's a decline in the demand for that. And so this seemed to me to be a better use, and I think the city council agreed unanimously it was a better use. They shared the same concerns you have about what the impact of parking is, and that's why they put on the stipulations that we had to come to the board of appeals, and we had to go and get site plan review. So we're following what they asked us to do, but in the concept of whether a residential use was better than the bar, and whether the proposal that we had at that stage, which was two or three months ago, was a good or a bad one, they were unanimous, including Council Cabana, that they approved it. And then we're just following up with what they said. When we went through this process, as I said, I filed on July 2nd, the petition never got heard. I then met with the building department to discuss these variations. I met with the building commissioner, and we dealt with these, because we had numbers that went from 21, 17, it was like a moving tide. Ultimately, using the form that they suggested to us, which was that you don't have to come or walk in your room space or stay at a well as part of the grocery area for the retail. Mr. Reed, Mr. Kratos handed a conclusion that the 19 spaces was sufficient. I filed the plan July 31, I filed a petition July 31. The petition I filed said 19 spaces. So the relief we're seeking is, if you think we need more than 19, whoever wrote the app said, they didn't even pick a number. The petition that Mr. Colored has no number.
Because they didn't know what the retail use was going to be.
So I tried to disclose, we've got 19 spaces.
And I'm asking you for what? And you can't tell me the answer.
Yeah, I can tell you the answer. 19, right now, this is all hypothetical. I mean, until we actually build a building, right now, the proposed use is for a nail salon. Okay? That's what the proposed use, the owner's brother...
Add that to a nail salon.
I'm not bringing it to them. The owner's brother owns nail salons. Okay? His brother wants to put the nail salon in there. All right, and until we actually get the project up to ground, I can't tell you he's moving in. All I can tell you is, right now, I'm finishing a nail salon for him and Eric. He's the one that wants to take his space. All right? That's the space, he's looking to combine that into one space. We made major concessions here. We cut over 3,000 square feet off of this building to try to get parking, which is not like we came in here and just said, oh, give us all this. We cut this building way down, all right, basically, and doing a raised structure, which is longwall money, doing a raised mezzanine structure with the steel. We're increasing our costs on the building, still trying to provide nice homes and a piece of commercial space and a parking that the zoning requires. And as far as the zoning requires for this business, if it's a nail salon, we're not doing a, he does not want any liquor stores, full-time stores, he does not want that in the residential space. He wants to, he's going to be a long-time landlord ahead. He's going to be basically, you know, dealing with this property full-time. He's not looking to sell, he's not looking to the condos, he's looking to basically, occupy the space here with a nail salon with his brother.
He has another motive that he expressed to me, which is, he wants to rent eight houses. He knows that he can't put something on the first floor that's going to disturb those people. Obviously, it's not like, there are many buildings right now in the city of Lynn that are above restaurants and bars, where people are living above, right down the street from here.
Right that sort of that building.
And so, yeah, the building next door, I moved up to remember it was a Gloria Chain on the corner. All right, a retail store. But now there's a residential one there. We can't change the size of the lot. We can't change, and we're not changing, the basic dimensional sideline that the building had and the front that it had. We are chopping off 3,000 square feet of the area, we are putting parking underneath. So we took the existing building, the existing lot, removed a large portion of the building, and essentially then went up above. And that's the same proposal we brought to the city council. Mixed use, street level. If you look at the zoning ordinance definition, it doesn't say what kind of business, it just says mixed use. Retail, business use first floor, residential second floor. It says nothing about numbers, because you look at the next portion, you have to read the zoning ordinance in its entirety, and it is a parking requirement. And I told you, based off my input, I might agree with you that there's a better way to have a formula. But that's the formula that you're... You know, I deal with people, I was in Cortez, I'm a water and sewer manager, and usage is really, we have a short abbreviated formula we use. We do things by, in terms of how much water that people use. Some people own swimming pools, some people have massive ponds. But we use a formula that essentially says bedrooms. If you have a bedroom, we calculate basically like a hundred gallons a bedroom. We use an arbitrary formula. But that's our experience. So what we're trying to do is work within the system that's there, achieve these goals. And I think ultimately, highly what the process is in the city council, I have the city council deciding, you can read, they made reasons why they rented. They said there's no detrimental impact on the city or the neighborhood can be envisioned. The proposed use will not derogate from the intended purpose of the zoning ordinance. The proposed use will be safe, attractive, and appropriate for the area. No substantial burden will be placed upon the city for city service. That's a decision of Lynn City Council. That's what they filed. And then the proposal they had, we actually were looking to have more spaces and a different use, but when reality set in, we tried to tailor what we had to satisfy as many of the requirements as the order. One of the biggest requirements was that we had to come here, and the other was that we go through site plan review. And so we think, and I rely upon professionals like the architect, like Mr. Reed. And at the end, when I did have to refile on July 31, I had Mr. Reed do this, because I thought it was difficult to understand, and I hoped that it would clarify what was there, what was proposed, and how specifically we thought we arrived at the right number of spaces. And he's got it broken up into three different categories. And this comes from my conversation with Mr. Donovan, when I said to him, the concern was onsite parking, and I said, the real concern is the retail. And, but I said, the builder and the architect tell me that in measuring the, that space, that there's some flexibility. He said, if you can show me on a plan, then I would be willing to consider. Because the building commissioner has the authority with the submission of documentation. There's a category glued on in the zoning ordinance that doesn't have all these uses, it says other, and it says upon submission of sufficient documentation to satisfy the building commissioner. So we think with the architect's plan, with Mr. Reed's plan, that we satisfy the parking requirement. If you don't think we do, then yeah. I originally filed on July 2nd and said, less than the required, I didn't know the number. All right? And after I met with them, I went with the exact number that we had, I do.
Well, the place is a mess down there, right? It is a mess. And right now, I always say there's a lot of hot tub for parking and a building that looks like a warehouse. So I want to know what you're going to do to beautify it.
Ask the architect that, but with respect to the lot, let me just say to you this, that again, this is from the city of Lynn zoning ordinance table of dimensional regulations. I'm looking at, in the business district, what's the minimum open space and requirement by percentage? You know what the answer is? Zero. None. So I would say to you, I agree, but we satisfy what the zoning ordinance says. The zoning ordinance says none.
Like a stormwater management plan?
That's going to be site plan review. That's, we're doing soil samples and everything else, that's about the site plan review. And as far as this perimeter or on the property, will you plan on playing the greenery and things all the way around?
So there's no stormwater management plan? You don't have to have that here the same, right?
We have a site plan review. If you redefine the application, you read, again, the Board of Appeals application says that what you need to file is a plot plan or something that shows the building on the lot. That's what you're required to file.
That's it.
That's it.
So the setback, you're coming for a variance setback?
The sideline of the building on this side...
On this side there.
Is unchanged. But because we have bought a property now used for residential purposes, there's a footnote that says, footnote 10 of the zoning, that if you have a building and it butts along the street line as it does, a building that's used on a lot of zone for residential use, so even though this lot may be in the business district, it's used for residential purposes. Therefore, we're required, based on that footnote, to have a seven and a half foot sideline. We've never had a seven and a half foot sideline.
What do you have here?
It's six inches from the rock at that point.
Yeah, and then the gridiron is supposed to have 15 feet. So we have 15 feet.
Except for the parking next door, how far are they setbacked? Are they also on the...
No, they're about 12, about 14, 15 feet, because they have angled parking spots with about 500 parking spaces.
And how tall is that building?
No, three stories.
The house on the back.
Basically, this is the house. This is a mixed-use building here on this side here, and then right here, this is a couple of storefronts, and then this spot that's two stories of apartments above it. And then right here, there's a three-family. And then, yeah, and then the rest of this, all over here, is all the parking. So there's basically one direct above, which is, you say condos? Okay, I thought it was a three-family, but okay, so you've got the condos right there, you have a mixed-use building with two more stories of apartments above it, and then this is all the parking left.
Two sides of the building are close to other residential?
But it's used for residential purposes, but it's in the business zoning.
No, this one, this one here is the mixed-use. This one in the front. And we're about fifteen feet from the side building. I'd say roughly about fifteen feet, if you protect. From the building that's here. Like I said, it's multiple storefronts on the first floor, and then two stories worth of apartments. And then that condo unit is basically on this section in the back of the building. It's on the side building. And that's about thirty-five, eighty feet from the site line.
It's parking.
Yeah, they're parking. They park right around that building. But basically, where this section is where we plan on doing is the greenery. This section here, they're actually parking pads right here. And then, basically, then it's all open about here. My parking lot sits back here. And then you come around this side, you have the actual lot in the driveway. There's basically one residential apartment.
I just, I, tell me, just, I don't wanna keep this going. I'm just curious on the lawn, how big is it?
The lawn is roughly about three hundred and, uh, three hundred point square feet.
Yeah, I'm surprised that that's not considered retail space. Because, you know, I'm sure you're not, you're not watching it close to nothing. I'm sure it'll help.
But, but it's not open to the public and.
It's open, but it's.
No, no, it's only for the use of the.
It's only for the use, it's only for the residents.
Right, but you're making money off it. That's my one point.
You know, make money off the lawn, right?
I agree with Mr. Figueroa, but it's not on offer. I mean, we didn't have no saying that it would have been, I think, a better project if they had one-bedroom units down there. But it is what it is.
Right now, the unit's gonna be roughly around nine hundred fifty square feet per unit. I mean, that would be a huge one-bedroom for us to try to actually get the rental in that area for that type of unit. We'd never get it.
That's a good square footage.
Yeah, they're very comfortable apartments. You know what I mean? About nine hundred forty, nine hundred fifty square feet.
Yeah, I think the hundreds around there were thousands.
Yeah. I mean, we, you know, we could have tried to squeeze the next one over the parking lot. We weren't going there. We're trying to make everything comfortable and everything fit and enabled, but.
I have one question, Sam. Sam, just a definition of fast food, that's what I'm asking. What qualifies into that? Local sub shop?
Well, that's, that's a, a simple question with a complex answer. Depends is the answer. The health department has like five categories. And it goes to whether you prepare food. So you could go to Market Basket and get a submarine sandwich. You get two kinds of submarine sandwiches, doing an half a Market Basket. You could do two kinds of submarine sandwiches at Market Basket. They'll make one for you, or they have it prepared. So the health department issues their permits for food establishments. And so, the City of Lynn doesn't have a definition of fast food. It has a definition of food establishment. It's any place that food is prepared for consumption on or off the premises, including catering or kitchen. So, but the health department has like five categories. It's whether you prepare the food there, whether you prepare it there and it gets sold packaged. So if you go to a convenience store, for example, some of them have, you know, pre-wrapped. So in terms of food, you have to get a license from the health department, and they have like five categories. But to be a food establishment, the City of Lynn zoning ordinance does require you to get a special permit from the city council, to be any of those.
And honestly, we'd be able to open up a stipulation, basically, no food. You know, that's right. Without prior approval, I mean, you wanna put that in there?
My point on that one is, you have food requires one space.
They put a record here.
For hundred.
Yeah, I think you gave us a large step early.
You want it?
Yeah, you'll leave them here.
Yeah, I'll leave that, it's no problem. I mean, we're willing to put a stipulation on it as far as no fast food, no food.
Well, because that, that would require seventeen spaces, or eighteen spaces.
Yeah, just for the store.
Just for the store.
Yeah, and like, like I said, we're willing to have a stipulation put right on it. You know, I mean, as far as that's concerned. Because, I mean, I know this family, I've been working for this family for about ten years now. They have multiple stores, they have multiple nail salons, they're, you know, they're very nice people.
Going back, you know, convenience.
Yes, they're doing convenience stores, liquor stores, and they own, you know, their big thing is right now is they're getting into the nail pharmacies. And the ones they build are very, you know, high-end. They're very nice.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask them one thing? I know you say that you're gonna have green space. I don't see where it is, I don't see what it is. But green space is very important to me, because it makes people feel better, it makes it look better, and it makes them take care of the property better.
Okay, so basically, right now.
I don't want you to do that, I wanna see what it's gonna be.
Well, I mean, I would try, maybe just stuff like that.
Excuse me, sorry. Can I speak things up here to another guy? You can submit a landscape plan.
Yeah, that's not a problem. Yeah, we can definitely give you something. And we're, we're gonna make it look nice. We want it to look nice for the tenants as well.
How long are you thinking your landscape plan?
Probably have something done within a week.
Okay.
You know?
Does that look good on this?
Yeah, yeah. I'll make something.
Thank you. Anyone else here who's familiar with this petition? Anyone here who's familiar with this petition? Can I have a close hand losing? Can I have a close hand closing? Anyone here close to this petition? Anyone here close to this petition? You're not, please, 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 please.
I'll make a motion to grant two stipulations. No fast food establishments allowed in the retail space and a landscape plan.
Okay. The chair will second motion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood. Mr. Gisono.
No.
Mr. Cole.
Yes.
Mrs. Curly.
Yes.
Mr. Callen.
Yes.
What if I am going to try? The petition has been granted.
Good luck.
All right, next case. One oh two and a half street.
One oh two and a half street, petition Kenny O'Sell, by the attorney John Michaels, to allow an existing non-conforming single-family structure upon an undersized lot in zoning district R five, with side yard enclosures and insufficient parking to be converted to two-family use.
Mr. Cole, we have been before you a couple of cases.
Let me add to, give you an answer. The board, if you, if you want to.
Sorry. John Michaels, seven hundred and twenty-three, from the, with Mr. O'Sell.
And he's the petition.
That's all.
Okay, and you're in?
Kenny O'Sell, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
As I stated, this building has been before you, before you a couple of cases, speaking to the additional unit. The history of the building is such that it was at one time a doctor's office and a apartment. It's present on single-family edition, mission case, probably four floors. That, see if the parking for the area. Here are a couple of parking plans. I don't know if you should submit with the.
Next one. Next one.
The elements.
Back home.
So, so submit, parking plans, I don't think submit with the, I mean, the package. So, one, we showed twelve foot of package, which you need. One. Not far, like, just pull it for all the parking. And the other one, made, but there's a change of circumstances. The garage, which reflected the plan, has been demolished. It's no longer in existence. So it has more space for parking and parking in the area. So, we would expect a request that this man would put out for a month to give us the opportunity to go and redo the parking plan, see for the fact, now that the building is in our town, we can fit spaces in there which are compliant with zoning ordinance, when they alternative a site near the building, within, uh, within a hundred feet, two hundred feet, as an alternative site parking. So, if you have any questions. We don't change the exterior of the building.
Okay, so, yeah, excuse me. You're asking for continuance for more information?
To provide you with.
We can allow that here and now, continue. Continue. What information do you want?
Uh, we can get additional parking.
Additional parking.
Whether we can fit the parking.
Put in some tax, so that you don't have to do pain and anxiety, is that it?
Right. And plus, the garage has been knocked down. So we want the possibility that you could fit spaces within the site.
Okay, would you be ready for the next meeting?
Looking for a month, yes.
A month, yes.
I asked you a question.
Yes.
How many times has this company formed this board? Year and two, every two years, right? And, and all of a sudden, you're here tonight, and the garage is knocked down. We still have to wait for the garage to be knocked down.
Well, it's knocked down.
I know what I'm saying, but, but the parking isn't. They're here, and we can't hear it because the parking isn't, right?
We could have to get, hopefully, a petition, so we get, we're gonna have to get to the parking issue. But, like I said, if this plot school is coming back in another month, we may be able to respond to that, to reflect what you have had with the parking.
I'm not saying I would vote for that. I'm just saying, it's hard to believe. It's like two years, and two years, and two years, and we're still here with this thing. And all of a sudden, you're here, and the garage is without me. That's all.
Well, maybe this, you have to take a look at the site. The fences are such that you're gonna have to.
Oh, I know, you're walking down there, I know what you're saying.
Okay. Moving on with this, I'd like your motion to continue the reason that the attorney has set for a, for parking, a plan, a new plan on the parking.
Okay. I just have one question, petition. What's in the folder, those four plans that were presented to us twelve years ago? Are you going with these plans, or have you?
Well, five new plans, thank you.
Huh?
Right, right, which ones?
Right, the four plans. The motion is, uh, to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Okay.
One second.
All right, second. Please, all the roll for continuance.
Mr. Makawak.
Where is he?
Yes, to continue?
Yes.
Mr. Gisono?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to continue.
Thank you.
Continue, and you, you'll be ready, ready to. My thank you.
If not, we'll just put back the board.
Yeah, my space, Mr. Cole is, one seventy Allen Street.
One seventy Allen Street, petition of Tom Mr. Marcus, by Mr. Marcus. Not the same person. To allow an undeveloped lot in zoning district, wide front lines to be used as a commercial vehicle storage lot.
Good evening, I'm Attorney Tom Marcus, with offices at fifty-six Central Avenue in Lynn. I'm here on behalf of the petition, the, uh, gravitated formerly named Tom Marcus, my cousin, and he's the owner of the property in, which he holds in an LLC, the one seventy-five dash one eighty-nine Allen Street LLC. And we're here to ask the board to authorize this property, one seventy Allen Street, for vehicle storage. You might recall that I was here earlier this year, this past February, and you granted the same petition for the property across the street of one seventy-five dash one eighty-nine Allen Street, which is the old hood plant. This property, one seventy, is directly across the street from the old hood plant. You know, everybody is well-known by anybody who lives or works in the city of Lynn, that the problem with, the problem with Allen Street, you know, has a terrible draining, flooding problem. And my cousin owns those two properties, the old little plant, which he demolished, and this vacant lot across the street, which is the subject of this hearing tonight. And he can't do anything with them. Water and sewer, until water and sewer fixes the drainage problem down there. Or until the drainage, I don't even wanna put it on water and sewer, until the drainage problem is fixed. So, there's a terrible also traffic and parking problem in Allen Street. And last February, when they came and you authorized vehicle storage in one seventy-five dash one eighty-nine, it was so that the primary beneficiary of that variance at one seventy-five, one eighty-nine was Pride Motor Group, which has no place to park all its accessories even at all. Now, Jim McLaughlin Towing needs a place to park the cars that it tows. And my understanding is, most of the ones that it tows, tows pursuant to a contract in the city of Lynn, it towed, it usually parked cars, and there's no place to put it. So if you guys grant this variance tonight, Pride Motor Group will move to this lot, one seventy. And Jim McLaughlin's towing will move to the hood plant, one seventy-five. The beauty of these uses is that, number one, they use unutilized lots in which no construction can take place because of the flooding problem. Number two, they help solve the traffic, the traffic and parking problems along Allen Street. And number three, because we're doing this, what we're asking for is vehicle storage as opposed to a parking lot. There's not cars coming in and out of these lots on a frequent basis adding to the traffic congestion in Allen Street. Pride Motor Group parks their excess inventory. McLaughlin parks towed cars. It's not like a strip mall where these cars come in and out of. So for all those reasons, I would respectfully request the board to approve one seventy Allen Street for vehicle storage.
You know, has, has Councilor Capone talked to him about this?
He talked to my cousin.
Because, well, he, he had a restriction for three years on the.
On the other one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has he anything on this one?
I, I tried to reach Councilor Capone today. I don't know if he's on vacation. My cousin told me that Councilor Capone was in support and didn't say anything about restrictions. But Mr. Callen and I have not talked to Councilor Capone myself.
I think, I think he should be, that's the input on this, because he had on the other one.
He didn't write a letter?
I mean.
Did he not write a letter?
No, no, we have no letter. He was friend of, that one across the street. I, I mean, I feel it's a good idea, but it probably should be a time limit on it, you know?
You wanna put the same time limit on the three-year time limit? Did he put on the other one?
Yeah, would that be better?
Well, not my opinion, because that means I have to come back with three years. But then, yeah, sure, Councilor Capone wanted the hood plant, so put the same time on it.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. Yeah. Now, the, the only other thing is, they don't seem to be, uh, watching that five-foot setback on the perimeter, smug up the wall of fences and everything. That, that, even though they're parking, and it's more or less dead parking, isn't it? But still, you know, there's a five-foot on the perimeter watching.
Yeah, I, I didn't realize that that applied to storage as opposed to parking, you know?
Well, well, you wanna look into that, because I think part of this is adjacent to housing.
There's no, there's no.
Living on the side.
Not, certainly not on the hood plant side. I know, I know.
No, 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 I know that.
But I think also, I, I'm not sure. I know on, on, as you're looking at one seventy from the street, there's a body shop on the left.
Yeah, that's the old, Vanier Brothers.
Which?
Vanier.
Yes, Vanier Brothers.
Yeah, they own that, yeah. But right next to there, there's housing.
On, on which side, the right side?
On the right.
No, there's a body shop right next to it.
Is it?
Yeah, a guy.
Yeah, but still, you wanna look into that. All right. You know, I mean, if, if it's, if it's the same as other areas, it should be adhered to. That's all I'm saying.
I'll, I'll find out whether we need to adhere to.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And I'm okay with the three-year restriction, because after, it makes sense. Councilor Capone wanted it for the whole.
Yes, yes, I agree.
So I think that's a good suggestion. So I think that's a good suggestion.
How long does a chain link fence and not a solid fence, if this is gonna be used for parking or maybe unsightly?
Instead of a chain link fence.
Instead of a solid fence, a wood fence? Yeah, just so then, I think Lynn is kind of growing, you know?
Do you choose to go down there, like, they don't do the solid because people go in there and do things?
Right.
And it's a little, it's a little easy for the police and just general people to keep distracting, doing silly stuff, that's typically why, you know?
So, but now if we're gonna just store cars there off the streets, they could sit there for a long time, they could be damaged, is this something?
Say again, you're gonna store cars or what?
You're gonna take cars off the street and store it there, so it could be a damaged car, it could be sitting there for a long time. Is this something we want to just always be present?
Well, there's not much else you can do with those lots and there's a tremendous vehicle storage problem in city of Lynn, which is tremendous. And Councilor Capone, not only is the board Council for Allen Street, but lives on Allen Street. Was in favor of this last year, earlier this year, on the one seventy-five, one eighty-nine. And he's expressed that the petition is in favor of this for one seventy. You know, Allen Street, I don't know how often you get a chance to break down, it's terribly congested. There's a lot of body shops and other commercial enterprises there, it's just hard, and everybody's got a park. And this will help get some of the cars off the street.
All right, anyone else? Yes, there is.
Question?
Yes.
Mr. Callen? With that flooding in that area becomes a towing lot. How bad is the flooding there, are you not worried of car chemicals leaking into the street? There's housing, I see a three family and a potentially a two family right on that lot, of that getting into those yards. Secondly, we're trying to make Lynn beautiful and not have tow lots everywhere, I mean, that doesn't go for what we want for the city.
Well, regarding to your first question, I think the flooding, the problem with the flooding is that you can't dig a foundation.
Okay.
For a building without your basement getting two feet of water, it's not so much the surface flooding. That's gonna cause chemicals to leak your vehicles into the ground.
So it won't be a liability issue with car chemicals leaking into people's backyards?
No. No. You know, most of these, most of these, you know, the cars that are currently parked there are brand-new cars, are owned by Pride Motor Group.
Yeah, that's different, but you're saying it's gonna be a tow lot?
Well.
That's, we know what kind of cars get towed.
Not to split hairs, but the one seventy-five, one eighty-nine where Pride Motor Group parks the cars now.
That right behind those.
Is gonna move to this one that we're talking about tonight, and the tow lot's gonna become one seventy-five, one eighty-nine.
So if the traffic is bad as it is and say a snowstorm, there's gonna be forty-five people trying to get their cars from there, it's not gonna create more traffic?
Well, compared to a commercial business, it's, you know, so one or two days a year when a lot of cars get towed, it's gonna be traffic. But on the average day, how many people are gonna be ransoming their cars from the tow lot, four or five, I don't know, compared to a Dunkin'?
It's a storage issue you're saying, so I'm supposing there's gonna be plenty of cars there, plenty of people coming to get their cars.
Compared to any other business, a Dunkin' Donuts, a restaurant, dry cleaning.
They're laundromat.
Well, the effect on traffic congestion of a storage lot is minimal compared to any other use, any other, any other non-residential use.
So on this lot, which is this one in the picture, the dirt lot, that's where the new cars are gonna go?
Uh, is that one seventy?
Uh-huh, this is one seventy.
They're gonna move across the street from the previously permitted one, from the, the board gave a variance on that work to this one.
I mean, there's also a concern that commuter rail goes right past that, so you have, you know, all this could potentially be unsightly. That corner is also near, a lot of commercial now beginning to form that are not.
What beginning to?
The commercials that are there, like Bentwater, you know, it's just, I don't know if.
Quite a big, quite a distance away from the grocery street, from the Lynn Business Park and Bentwater Brewery. It's probably.
It's the next window?
Yeah, it's the next window.
It's the next window?
Not that far.
Right, I think the character, the character of, the character of that part of Commercial Street is different from, of Allen Street rather, is different from Pride.
Yes. Well, I think that's what point you're trying to make.
So just keep it out, keep it that way, always then, okay.
Okay, we have to move on.
I mean, kinda make a move.
One, Tom?
Yes.
You mentioned McGlothlin Brothers, I think it's a dead guy or I think is this gonna be used as a city lot?
It's only, it's only cars that McGlothlin tows. And my understanding is that most, if not all, of the cars that McGlothlin tows are gonna be pursuant to its towing contract with the city. But I can't say, I don't know, I haven't talked to McGlothlin about, I don't know that the only cars that McGlothlin's gonna put there are cars that it tows on behalf of the city. It might store its own private towed cars. I don't know, Mr. Cole.
Now, they're gonna be going in there at all times of the night with these cars? Potentially they go, right?
Yep. Well, you know, the only, it's rare, I don't think there's much city towing that goes on at night except for the snow emergency. Because there's no meter violations, there's no.
Street clean.
All the street, yeah.
Street clean.
All non-parking street.
And again, Mr. Jussono, again, it sounds like I'm splitting hairs, but I'm not, I don't think I am, trying not to. The tow cars are gonna go to the place where there already has the variance.
Which is on the side of the road.
Pride's gonna put their cars in this lot.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Just wanna know if I understood you. Did you say that the cars that we sold you last year that are across the street are now gonna be put in this lot that you're asking for now?
Right.
So what you're really gonna do is the cars, the towing is gonna go where the other cars are now?
Right.
Why?
Because this lot, one seventy, we're talking about tonight, holds more cars than the old hood plant. And Pride needs, Pride Motor Group needs, it holds, I think, I have a note of it somewhere.
A lot of cars across the street out there.
Yeah, well, this one holds about forty more cars and Pride Motor Group has that capacity. So they're gonna move to this lot. And.
What if this is denied, what are you gonna do?
If it's gonna, if it's denied, we're gonna keep it the way it is and pay the real estate taxes and.
I'm just gonna cut me that. You have the whole wall, so.
No.
I'm not gonna be getting any taxes.
You know?
You know? Try and do a good thing for the city of Lynn, Peter Capono thinks it's a good thing for the city of Lynn. This board voted on it unanimously, five to nothing in February, I'll be able to.
That was across the street, now you're gonna move them, now you're gonna put the cars over there that we voted to go over there, but we're here. It doesn't say anything here that you're gonna do that.
You know, the, the, the approval in February was given to my cousin to use it, to use one seventy-five dash one eighty-nine as a vehicle, motor vehicle storage lot. And that's the same approval we're giving. We don't have to, you know, there are other, there are other people besides Pride parking at one seventy-five, one eighty-nine. The variance wasn't given to Pride, the variance was given to the owner of the real estate, which is my cousin's LLC. So he can switch tenants anytime he wants. He can put Pride in today and put Kelly Honda in tomorrow, if it turns out that way, put McGlothlin Towing in the day after that. So nobody's trying to see, which just so happened when I came in February, was Pride, and now for logistical reasons, which is Pride running out of room there and there's more room at one seventy. If we get approved.
Okay.
If we get approved, we're gonna put the Pride at one seventy and put McGlothlin along with the other people.
All right, Mr. Callen.
All right, I've said enough, I'm competing with Mr. Vitale for long presentation, so.
I get paid by the board.
With the office.
Okay, anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else in favor of this petition, you know, not, those who favor it, those who oppose. Anyone here opposed to this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition, you know, not, those who have opposed, who want to listen, boy.
Mr. Callen, I personally would like to see it continue, I think there's a lot of unanswered questions. I know Tom's done a great job with anything we've done for him, but there's a lot of unanswered questions here. Is this a, really, is this a city lot, if it is, there should be a security plan, we should know what we're voting on, what kind of cars are gonna be in there? So I just think we need, between now and then, just a better description of what's gonna happen.
I'm happy to answer the question, but I apparently didn't do a good job of anticipating it tonight, so I need you to tell me what the question is.
We will, we'll tell you the specific questions.
But, you know, but if by a city lot, and I'm okay with the continuance, okay? But if by this, and I'm not trying to talk you out, but if by this, if, if what you mean, Mr. Cole, is whether it's gonna be a city lot. The city's not paying rent to the property owner, McGlothlin's paying rent to the property owner.
Now, I'm concerned, I just wanna know what kind of cars, what type of cars, where are these cars coming from? I wanna know what's going on, it just.
Okay, that's a fair question.
You know, it's not McGlothlin trucks that he's working on, it's got bad transmissions, this is his towing business.
Right.
And like you said, there could be three or four other towing companies also utilizing that lot at some point down the road. Your cousin has the right to do that, just like he did with the government that he's using now.
Right.
So I just think, I'd feel a lot better if I just had.
Okay, so, so you'd like to see it.
I would.
So what is the tender?
So, yeah, okay.
I have a second question.
Yep.
All right. Please follow.
Mr. Figaro?
Yes. Yes, to continue, yeah.
Mr. Jussono?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
All right, just one second, Mr. Callen, if you don't mind. So you'd like to know a better description of exactly where these cars coming from? You know, is it gonna be part of, are these cars that are coming in here gonna be part of the city's, you know, towing program? If there's gonna be people coming and going, how about lighting, what's the story with security?
What are the hours of operation?
Yeah, yeah.
But we're not, but, you know, the thing that's puzzling me a little bit, and maybe I'm not catching, catching drift. Is for the lot that we continue hearing on, Pride Motor Group's going into that lot. So McGlothlin thing is going into the existing lot. So are these, are these questions still important to you?
Yeah, they're important.
Okay. If they're important.
Because, because we may say that.
Keep it the way it is.
Making McGlothlin should go into this lot here.
Well, you don't have the right to say that, but.
Well, no, no, the one that you're coming here for tonight.
Say it again.
The lot you're coming in here for tonight, we could put those stipulations on that lot. Absolutely can. Well, then we don't have to grant it again.
I know you have, you have the right to deny it, but I don't think we put those.
So basically?
Using, excuse me, stipulations are usually acceptable to a petitioner, to a petitioner, so I think we go along with that. The stipulations that Mr. Cole might do will consider, and at the next meeting we'll debate, and you'll have a chance to, you know, re-balance whatever you want.
I mean, it could, it could be as simple as, if you get permission on this lot, then this is what you'll do with that lot that we, what we did, we granted back in February. We need to know what, I'm not giving up that lot and saying, well, yeah, you can do whatever you want with it, and I'm gonna move the cars. So why don't you figure out exactly what you wanna do with the hood lot, and somehow we can incorporate those stipulations somehow in granting this lot over here.
All right.
Right.
You're the lawyer, you're the one to tell the witness.
Yeah, okay.
See if you can figure it out.
Most of them are, yeah, like the best architect, I'm a lawyer. I'm coming with Mr. Capono to talk to.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. That's my next question. All right. You want one?
Yeah.
Oh, seven.
Yeah, I know it.
Next case here is. Yeah, thirty-seven bowls. Okay.
I certainly do. Thirty-seven bowls, please. Petition of Walter M. Marita Rodriguez by his attorney Sammy Bargelli. To allow construction of a attached porch for an existing single-family residence upon an undersized lot that coaches within side yard upon that setback.
Thank you.
I'm attorney, I'm Kevin Wallace, C D A, for this, oh. I'll take Friday on the other shipment. I filed a petition, similar, that said allow construction of a new replacement porch attached to a three-inch diameter non-conforming single-family dwelling in the R two general residence system with less than required front side line in front of it. I think that's. Walter started out, he had small porch steps that came out. He began construction of a larger porch. He didn't want to put a roof over it, the building found it, Mr. Pete Richards said, once you put the roof over it, you need to get order of appeals relief. I don't know that I agree only on that basis. I think that the larger issue, when I went to Mr. Starey and I asked him to give me history, and he came back and sort of agreed with me. I thought that the issue was the sideline. And I couldn't really determine if I said that, so I get Mr. Reed doing it. And then I figured out, if you look at the top, the lot's not a perfect rectangle. So when you look at the top, it's like fifty point seven, that angle with the house where it is, when you add the replacement porch, reduces the front setback that was there. Which I think results in a violation of our front setback. And then secondly, you can carry the line of the house out, but the line of the house never meant that sideline. But once you extended the width of the porch, now you exacerbated a sideline that didn't conform, you made it more non-conforming by adding to the porch. And so that's the relief that we seek. And somewhat in conflict, again, is another footnote, this is footnote eight of the zoning ordinance. It does say projecting eaves and uncovered steps shall not be considered, is coming within the meaning of the section, which means the front setback. But then, the same paragraph for the same section in the footnote says, dwellings a lot erected less than ten feet from a way before June twenty-nine, nineteen twenty-six, that's when the ordinance became effective, there's some words. May be extended upward and or to either side, but no closer to the way than the front of the existing building. So I think that trapped us, and so that's why we're here, because he started to build, Mr. Reed did a plan and showed, I think, five point nine on one side, maybe two to three, two to three is not seven and a half, and five point nine is not ten. And these are invoking, like, fine structures, and they create these issues with the effect on front setback. So I think that it would be consistent with the purpose of the U zone ordinance, which is to generally beautify the city, improves the house. The lot's the same size it was in nineteen twenty-six. And so what we really did is, when he started the project and he removed the existing front steps, he wanted to add this porch, he created a violation of the front. And it worsened a sideline that was never there on that one side, and that's what we see.
All right. Anyone else stand in favor of this petition? Anyone else stand in favor of this petition? And of course, those who are in favor, those who oppose, anyone here opposed to this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Anyone who opposed, who opposed, who is a wish number?
Listen to me, right?
Listen, fair. Served by Mrs. Curly, please follow.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
To grant, Mr. Jussono?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to grant, granted by Mr. Curly. The next case is Mr. Cole.
What you want me to do?
Be a, be a, be a, be a. Okay, but I will, you'll be on this one.
Okay. Twenty-one day, one half, petition of Robert Minock to allow construction of an unattached twenty-two by twenty-four foot garage and excessive fifteen feet tall on an undersized lot in zoning district.
Oh, we have two sitting on this. And I'll go back and pick it up.
Oh, good. Yes.
Give me any other just?
Rob Minock, forty-one day, one half.
All right, please, you have the floor.
I was just, last, when I was here two weeks ago, you guys asked me to bring in a copy of a parking plot plan.
Yeah.
But with dealing with Reed and Ann Sevays, they couldn't get me the plan within the two weeks. So I wanted to see if we could come back at the next meeting, he said he could have it.
Yeah, they wanna continue, they want.
If you guys still want the drawings, but you wanted that, but you couldn't do it in two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, we could continue. We could continue.
Yeah, good. Do you want the drawings now or can you bring them back when I come back?
If you've got enough copies, I'll take them now.
You guys?
Oh, we got one set?
Yeah, it's just, there's, I drew two different ways, because I know that you guys are worried about having a flat roof as opposed to a pitch roof.
Well, when you come back, can you have a copy for everyone?
If I can take those, I can make copies over there.
What do you want to think?
Yeah.
Yeah, the same. Yeah.
I can bring copies, like I said, you just.
All right, the petition has.
Go ahead, Mr. Callen.
The petition has requested that Ken, and with the next one. The petitioner has requested to continue at the next regular meeting. For here, a motion.
Make a motion, continue, I second it.
Thank you. Please call the.
Mr. Figueroa, continue?
Yes.
Mr. Ma- Macawatt, to continue?
Yes.
Mr. Cole, to continue?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly, to continue?
Mrs. Curly.
Should do.
Yeah.
I saw you said Jussono.
Now, Lynn, to continue?
Continue. The petitioner will be continued at the next regular meeting, which is.
Yeah, you're going to have.
That's kind of eighteen.
Same time?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come back with that.
I'm gonna make copies of it to bring back.
Yeah.
Plus, you just.
Next case is seventy-seven, but on reconsideration, Mr. Callen.
Yeah.
You can read, Mr. Callen.
Well, not related, you have to first, well, reconsider before we do anything, so.
So do you have something there, if you make a motion?
Sure, so, um, I, I wanna see if we make a motion, right? Um.
To reconsider?
To reconsider, so.
Then, then we see.
Sure.
All right. So there's a motion on the floor to, uh, to reconsider, so we have.
It looks like.
Yes.
Okay, please call the reconsider.
Mr.?
Mr. Orton.
Mr. Figueroa?
Yes, to reconsider?
Mr. Macawatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly, Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes. Okay, the case is hard open. It's like a new place. Could you please, uh, celebrate, if you have something there?
Sure. Sure, so, um, I, uh, I went by the sites this past, um, week. And I think from the last previous meeting that we've had, and there was some concern about, um, the owner of this lot not taking care of the properties, and also there was some, um, based on the new drawings that we received, that, um, that, uh, based on the concern that we had of the height of the, of the second floor, under the third floor, and the means of regress, the second means of regress, I think we should at least hear them and consider, uh, what they're proposing.
Okay, so, Mr. Vitale, you have the floor.
Uh, well, I had a point prepared, because I, I understood that maybe I was wrong, but, um, that there was a concern about the use of the attic and the stairway going from the basement, even though it was accessible by either, um, the tenant on the first floor proposed second. So I had Mr. Vitale redo the plan, and I think he turned to the page that shows, uh, access, uh, to the attic, yeah, uh, also is, no way you can access to the attic.
Yeah, I just got one question. Who sat on, who was sitting on this case?
I have Mr. Figueroa and Macawatt today, 'cause it was consideration. It was a reconsideration.
All right. Is it Macawatt?
And Mr. Figueroa.
Oh, all right.
Well, who was sitting on it last time?
Uh, Dick Woods.
He is. So there's two associates on this.
I know, but for a reconsideration, you can't have an associate sit on it that didn't talk about it in the first place.
Who, who, who was that?
Well, Dick Woods isn't here, this is a reconsideration. And because I didn't know what the procedure was, I, I, uh, asked Mary to call me to, did you get my message?
I called the one about.
And I called, I called Ramona also, 'cause I didn't know if you got my message. And he called me this morning and he told me that the only people that can sit on a reconsideration are the people that were on it in the first place.
Right.
So we only have four people sitting on this reconsideration?
Well, you, you could, it's, uh, it's, uh, now, the four.
Well, so that's what we have, we have, we have four people now sitting on this.
Instead of five, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the juniors know that, I mean, going in, it's only four people.
Yeah.
I have. You know, I, I gotta, I, I want a minute to explain it to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Woods, we have five, you know, we're filling the votes, one, two, three, four, five, and here. And I'm saying five. So, um, if you go with four, then you're off. If you wait.
Yes, the.
Oh, yes. Absolutely. You see, now, wait till Mr. Wood is here. Uh. I think I just, I need to try to explain it again, and then wait till Mr. Woods is here.
Yeah.
Is that's.
Yeah.
I understand.
Continue, make a motion, continue to Mr. Callen. That's all.
Continue, continue the reconsideration.
Yes, Mr. Wood's here.
Yeah.
I didn't know. Mr. Macawatt.
All right, so four, if one votes, it can.
Well, I didn't know why, but that's why I called him, not what I'm doing.
Okay, yeah, okay. Someone make a motion to.
Yeah, continue, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Cole, your motion, continue the reconsideration for that, for you. I have a second. Let's hear the second motion, call the.
Mr. Macawatt?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes. Okay, continue to, I try to.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, now we have two reconsiderations.
Yeah.
First one will. Yeah. Sixty-four, Thibet Street.
Who's sitting on this?
Okay, who is on?
Hold on one second, please. Mr. Macawatt?
Mr. Macawatt, right. And then, and then the.
And Mr. Wood's gone, absent again.
We should just, can we continue all of it? Because Mr. Wood's. None of those.
Yeah, wait a second.
Mr. Callen, Curly, Cole, and Macawatt, and Wood's absent.
All right, uh, we have a problem here for the people that are here. And I have no information, and I know you submitted no information from Mary. And I have information from the fire department, and I have a weather from them. And, uh, but if we had a little, just go along to the next regular meeting, and so we have the right people here, I don't want to do it.
We, we gotta do, we gotta be careful of every one of them.
Right.
We've got four people here on this petition that's.
Right, I think all the continuers, right now, we have four people.
That's right.
Four, four people, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's, it's just a majority vote on the reconsideration.
Yeah, it's simply majority, right. So, uh, what is, which one is one?
All right, so which one we doing, sixty-four?
Yeah.
So there's a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Call the role.
Mr. Macawatt?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
No.
Mrs. Curly?
No.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Two, two.
All right, two, two. All right, that, that means that part of that is, we've, she's.
No, that means it's, it's, the reconsideration doesn't pass. The original vote was ranked, is, is in effect.
Okay, so the new information I have will not be brought up again, that's the second thing. So, I'm.
Thirty-three Yacko Street?
Yes.
Again, um, the motion is to, um, reconsider? Walk up on thirty-three Yacko Street?
Who's chairman, so?
Mr. Figueroa?
Uh, yes.
Reconsider, yes? Mr. Cole?
No.
Mrs. Curly?
No.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Two, two.
Oh, this is confusing, I'm trying.
It's in fact.
Well, we have the full form, I just want to make the other. And then I have any suggestion?
So, I think just so that they understand what's going on, that if the reconsider doesn't pass, that means the original decision is still in effect. Okay? That's it, I just want you guys to know, 'cause I. Yeah, so if it was granted the last time, it means it's still granted in your, in your.
Yes, yes. So the, uh, information, the information is.
It's known. So that means the original decisions stand on those two cases. Yes, it's final.
Whatever the original decision is, it's final.